Kat is someone who is always willing to do anything that's needed in the district. She very rarely says no if I'm in a jam and need someone to do, I don't know, sixth grade AIS E L A. And she's, "Sure, I'll do it." One of the most valuable members of the team, and I mean that wholeheartedly. She's been a great addition to the Canjo family, even though she's been in the community for even longer than she's now been a teacher here. Kat has probably been one of the most vital people in the middle school in our commitment to promoting lifelong wellness. She's someone who adamantly takes her health in her P E classes, you know, out into not only, you know, the outdoor grounds, but out into other opportunities, whether it's hiking or biking or now skiing that we've started to do for the last couple of years, and kind of breaking that mold of what traditional P E looks like versus what P E can be outside of the classroom. I'm very excited to present this to you, and thank you so much for being part of this.
I have the privilege of recognizing Amanda Rose, who came and joined us as our high school council. She was a singleton for a while, did a fantastic job, and now she's been a great model and mentor to our new council director, which is fantastic. One of the things that has been, I think, so important about what Amanda's brought to our district is that she has focused on the whole child. She works on the social, emotional, and she's working on the academic piece, and then their future. The coolest thing that she set up last year, the first year she's gonna be doing it every year now, is a jobs fair. It's about the trades. She brings in different people from a variety of different trades and trade unions and has them meet with the students so they get an understanding of what is available out there. Before, we often see councils that have pushed the college level, and that's not really the norm anymore. Trade school is becoming just as important and vital as to a career college. So through that, I think a lot of kids have really embraced it, okay, there's other avenues for me. We have a lot of students, as you see at graduation, that are entering the job force. Well, let's enter a job that you first enjoy, and that can be a lifelong career for you. And that's where she really brings those kids. And I can speak personally, my ethnic perspective, he is against the whole college. It's not his thing. But Amanda's given the great opportunity of going and visiting the Love Lake School in Skidnappity. Loved it, can't wait to sign up now. And it's just a different experience than what a lot of kids have seen before. So I can't wait to see how much we'll grow these programs. Again, we're still pushing those colleges, we're pushing all avenues for all of the kids, and I think it's been fantastic. And I have to say, she's been a huge valuable member to our P P S team, and we've become a pretty large, strong team, and she brings so much to the table with regard to resources in our area, how to work with certain families, be collaborative across the buildings, and that has been a huge asset to our team. So thank you, and congratulations.
I have the privilege to, I must say, I'm a re-cred. So Anna Ree started in Canjo right before I did, the same year, and I didn't actually do the hiring, but if I could have selected somebody, I would have definitely selected Anna Ree. You walk into her classroom, and she just brings like this calm energy to the classroom. You walk in there, and it's just a beautiful room. It's probably, I hate to say it, one of my favorite rooms in the school because she has like aquariums and just like, it's just peaceful, it's just tranquil, and she always has a calming demeanor with the kids. She gets her point across, but does it in a very calm and tranquil type of way. So I found that I've had a lot of common with Anna Ree, there's similar likes, like hobbies. I'm very happy to see, this is the first time she's taught in a district where she's receiving tenure too. She taught in Illinois, and she also taught in London, and she said she's finally found a place that she can call home. And she just really loves our district, and I just love having her in our school. She's also part of the leadership team, she went to Washington D.C., she'll continue this summer, and I just look forward to many, many more years with Anna Ree and Edie Stell. So congratulations.
It's not often that someone gets to save my life in a school year. And about three days before the start of school, I found out that we were losing our family consumer science teacher to leave to another district. So I sent out an email for help, and Heather Rockwell very graciously reached out to me. She's like, "Well, can I do what I want? Can I cook and take kids on field trips?" And I was like, "Absolutely." And as most of you know, Heather teaches Spanish in the district. So Heather was, when I first joined Canjo five years ago, Heather was honestly one of the most friendly, welcoming faces out there, and we share a lot of the same likes with travel and with cooking and food, and I've had lots of wonderful conversations with her. In terms of student interactions and being a presence in the building, she has, you know, lots of kids that genuinely care about her, and she's a wonderful, wonderful part of the Canjo middle school and high school community, and she will be sorely missed. So congratulations on her retirement, Heather. Now, it's not often that you meet someone who not only wears the R2-D2 suit, but has Disney monorails in his backyard, has a scale model, Buick Lander, slander in his classroom, half Volkswagen bug, and is always willing to go the extra mile. One of honestly the most interesting people I'd ever met, Dr. Pons and I had a connection to another school where I started my teaching career with someone he's known for a long time, so we kind of had that connection before we started here. And the story I wanted to tell about Dr. P. My first, I think it was actually my second full week here at Canjo, we had a presenter here, and the presenter was talking about, you know, being engaged in the moment and, you know, not being, you know, lost off into something else, and acting with respect and all that. And as he's giving this presentation, this presenter kind of comes over to me, and he motions up to Dr. P. And for those of you that don't know Dr. P, Dr. P's sketch notes. So like, as someone's talking during the presentation, he's drawing images and taking notes, and he's so engaged and engrossed in what's going on, but how he does that doesn't always look the same as everybody else. So this presenter comes over, and he's like, "You know, we're talking about students being engaged, and I have an intention, this guy's grading up here." And like 20 minutes later, I was so new to the district, I didn't know any better. Like 20 minutes later, the presenter comes back, and he listens, and he's like, "I owe him an apology, and I owe him an apology." He's like, "He just gave me this sheet of paper, and it has every key word that I talked about in this presentation, and it's got graphic images of what I've just talked about." He's like, "I couldn't have asked someone to be more engaged and engrossed in what's going on than he was." So here I am, a new person to the district, and fully didn't, you know, know what I was getting into, and that's kind of, you know, how I developed my respect for Greg and what was going on, and not everybody recognizes that. Greg is gonna be sorely missed, and I can't say my good things about him. Congratulations on his retirement, and make sure he comes up for Don and Greg.
Well, I have the opportunity to recognize Dr. Swart. She is not here tonight because she hates people. Sorry about that. We joke, we give her a month to say, "I hate people," and I actually got her a shirt, it's probably why she didn't come, and also said, "I hate people." But Dr. Swart has been a valuable member of our school community since I've been here in 2006, I believe she got here about 2001 herself. As our school psychologist, she actually was acting as a director, special ed, C S C chair, and doing school psychology. She is a jack-of-all-trades when it comes to education and special education. I use her as my own personal mentor, my resource guide. She doesn't have an answer, she knows exactly where to go find that answer. Her knowledge of assessment and ensuring that we are appropriately and correctly classifying students has made it so our district has been well within the limits of who should and should not be classified. We're not going over, we're not going below. She just is so in tune that other districts are reaching out to her. In fact, they have heard about her retirement and are calling her. So I've been honestly, going on my send, because of her knowledge, we're actually gonna be holding on to her for a little bit, specifically for C P S E purposes, those are little, our preschoolers. But I'm certainly backed around to the fact that she hates people. What's funny, and I imagine Amanda and I imagine Caroline and Ken can agree with me, she is the person that people seek out. If she has a question, I'm getting a nod from her neighbor. If you have a question, if you have a need, she's the first person that people go to because they can ensure that she will be supportive, she will attempt to come up with an answer, point you in the right direction, and that's just who she is. And so again, the joke about her, about not liking people and not wanting to be here, and she hates this stuff, but it's so important that she knows how important she is to all of us. So even though she's not here, I will encourage her in a large group.
There's so many amazing things to say about Linda that I don't even know where to start. And I guess it kind of goes back to what Dr. Fitzgerald said a few minutes ago about burnout. You know, we have record high numbers of people leaving the profession, administrators, superintendents, teachers, it's all over their place. But for Linda, who's been in the business for decades, she comes in every day with all the enthusiasm, the energy, the passion, the care of a first-year teacher. And to be able to hold on to that for so long and be so passionate, so involved with her students is just, it's unbelievable. And you see it in every single thing she does. If you go to a classroom, the lessons are engaging, they're fun, the kids, the kids want to be there. No one really needs to take her class, right? But they do, and they follow her, Spanish two, three, four, and they do that, and some maybe they want to learn a foreign language, but let's be honest, most kids, it's who they want to be with you. And that's the most remarkable thing, if you go to Linda's room at any given time, you're going to see kids. And it doesn't have to be a class, it could be a study hall, it could be her prep, it could be her lunch, it doesn't matter. If you go to our room, there are kids there, and there are kids there because she's what this district exemplifies. We talk a lot about restorative practices, building relationships, and nobody does that the way you do, and that's why there's always kids in the room, because you're a friend, a second mother, a confidant, a shoulder to cry on, someone to celebrate with, you're the person that the kids want to see the first thing in the morning, right? 7:40, if I come and tell you something, there's 30 kids in your room talking about something, and it's just, it's just unbelievably remarkable the way that you have impacted our students in the district. And I think about retirement party two years ago, you and I were talking, and I remember telling you like, "Hey, your retirement's coming soon," and here we are, right? And, "So what are your plans after?" And you had joked around that you wanted to open up a daycare. And so I talked about putting you in the fitness center, so you could watch Attabell, you could watch, you know, Students and Kids, and you were gonna pull it, "Mama sees this daycare," when you were kind of very in the fitness center. And although we were saying a joke, I guess the best compliment I could give you is that if you did open a daycare, you would be the only daycare in the country that I would feel comfortable leaving, I don't know it, because I know that with you, she would get an infinite amount of love, care, and attention, because I've seen you give that to every single student and every single staff member who has ever walked through these doors. So Linda, on a personal note, I mean, you're a fantastic teacher, a fantastic person. The district can't thank you enough, and just on a personal note, I'm gonna miss you a ton of healing, so.
Wow, I don't know how to type that.
I'm gonna acknowledge Deff Hillyer on her retirement, she's not here this evening. I do know that Deff began her career in around 1995, she's been with the district for a very long time. She took some time off to take care of her children. She has worked in the district, she's worked in AIS, she's worked in second and third grade, and now she's been teaching AIS with Chad Bowerman.
Pre-K.
Or pre-K, I'm sorry. Pre-K with Chad Bowerman, and she has, she and Chad have really built a great team within the pre-K program and a great program for our students. She will be retiring to spend more time with her grandchildren and enjoying some of she loves to read, and I know that the staff, and I will really miss her, I miss her, she's also much like Anna Ree, very calm demeanor, very, you see her in the hallway, she's always smiling, greeting staff and students, and I know she's gonna be missed, I'm gonna truly miss her, and she's been, whoever fills her shoes, which I believe it's gonna be Kelly O'Neal, she has very big shoes to fill because Debbie has just done an outstanding job in pre-K, so I wish her a lot of luck.
Yes, just to echo, we're going to celebrate on the 15th of June again for retirees and say thank you. You know, over 120 years you put into our district, all of this together, when you add that up, and the impact that you've had on children, and the impact you've had on families, and the impact you've had on faculty and staff and administration, it's mind-blowing. And people on the outside don't see all those pieces, and it's all those pieces that make this place so special, and what you've given back to the people coming in is even more, and don't ever forget that either. And we have a lot of retirees coming back and substitutes, so we'd love to have you back as substitute, as well, as we have one sitting out there. But I want to thank you so much for all your years of service. I know I've only been here four years, but you guys have just done a phenomenal job, especially through one of the toughest times we've ever faced in education. So thank you again for that.
We do have some refreshments to celebrate, and we will recess to do that. If you can bear with us for five minutes, we just have a few more personnel things to quickly go to, I promise it, it'll be no longer five minutes, maybe even less. Well, thank you. Okay, so we have a continuous temporary positions.
Yes, those are positions that have been built in through the grants, and some ancillary positions like E N L, which changes every year due to the number of enrollment.
Any questions? Okay, and create a temporary position.
Yeah, this is AIS. This is the special education AIS position that is gonna be up at the high school. It's retooled for that because of the certification area.
Okay, good. Okay, then we have appoint a swim instructor.
Four of our students, which is great. Oh, not four of our students.
Are you a student?
She looks like it.
Okay, then appoint substitute food service.
Substitute cleaner as well.
A. Oh, I missed a cleaner, cleaner.
Keep saying this every month, but we're just really so lucky to continue to have substitutes, it's been a blessing, it really has. Talking to other districts and seeing signs everywhere, "We need substitutes, we need substitute bus drivers, we need substitute aides," and every day we turn, and as I look out, you know, go down the outside waiting for the buses to come in for the elementary school, and there's four retirees, you know, three or four retirees walking in all the time, which we've been very lucky to have, so, very lucky. Says a lot about our culture and people wanting to come here, so.
And then finally, amend the foreign language teacher appointment.
The amendment was because she had tenure in a prior district, so her tenure would be three years instead of four years because New York State passed that a couple of years back.
Any questions, anyone? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, all in favor? Okay, I would also entertain a motion to recess so that we could have some, some refreshments to celebrate the tenures and the retirements. Second, all in favor? Let's eat, guys. It's outside in the hallway, I think you probably saw it. Motion to reconvene? Second, all in favor? Okay, thank you. So we'll start with the student representative report. Make it away, Alex. Oh, I'm sorry, art department presentation, my bad, and you're on.
Okay, introducing the Art Department. So I'm Michelle Iglestein, you guys know me, Colleen Hackwell, I'm at East Hill, I came today at the high school. And Ally lost her voice a little bit, so gee.
I was gonna ask you to speak up, but I'll let it go.
Okay, so we have a picture here from the art show. We wanted to start off with East Hill Elementary.
Okay, so next year, we are planning on integrating E M A and math into art.
Excuse me, could I ask you just to move closer maybe?
We started this year, we started working on cursing because I thought it was important to just write their, their full names and everything, their full signatures. We also will be doing a short story on illustration next year to work on the E M A aspect, and we do a lot of measuring with shapes, symmetry, and pattern in class already. Next year, we plan on having some field trips with a few older grades to the art cattle to do some life drawing and sculpture part. I also want to take advantage of the permanent package design collection that they have to do a package graphic design project with older students and utilize the library resources. And then for fifth grade kindergarten graduation, we do a self-portrait, actually every grade does a self-portrait, but specifically to post at the graduation, do a self-portrait in fifth and kindergarten, and a larger, more extended project as like a keystone, so like a sculpture, an in-depth project of a sculpture or painting that they'll have on display at graduation that they can take with foundation for their kindergarten and last year in elementary school. This is some pictures of Wellness Day, which I wanted to incorporate because we did the combination class with music. For Wellness Day, where the students got to listen to music and create, or face up how they felt their feeling were and how that was expressed visually. Our show would be all come up on March 7th this year, which was great, we had a house in town, and we got to see some of the students in East Coast and show off some of the work that we did this year. So it was really nice.
And my class is, I have one for every student, so hopefully we had a lot of turnout of those, so at least it gave them incentive to go.
Yeah, I think we had the most artwork we've had in a long time, especially coming off of the pandemic. Students were so proud to show their art, and also because we had ice cream donated by Q's, the free ice cream sundaes and the cookies and the lunch donated by the school. It brought, you know, brought a lot of families out, even if the child didn't have a piece of artwork in, they would come and support their friends and came just to socialize. And combining that with the music, it was, you could feel the energy in the air, so many people, so proud of the young people, and everybody was so happy to see each other. So we want to thank you for that, for being so supportive of arts and music and, you know, allowing such an event to take place, to be open with. So thank you for that. Middle school art, I just put a couple of pictures on there because I do grades seven and eight now, Ally gives the sixth graders. We start off, it's a lot about identity formation in the middle school. So if it doesn't pertain to them, and isn't important to them, they're not engaged in it at all. So we start off with Annie Warhol. They picked their own subject matter, the style of their chosen artists, Warhol with Dinah Tebow. And one of their favorites is Keith Haring. So over here to the right with Rainbow Colors, students had to create a bi-ten pictogram message that represents what's important to them without using words. So they're showing something with all of the symbols, they do a little writing portion that tells me what all of their symbols mean. So you can tell just by looking at this, that was very important to the student, was music and the violin and, you know, the love of the parent. And the Rainbow Colors also represented something about parents. Here's some more middle school art. We really get into drawing from direct observation, we do Paul Cezanne, post-impressionist, which leads up to like Canjo and all the later artists. Lucky for me, when we were in elementary, I built upon what Ally was doing down in elementary, we do art criticism, which is the same for every grade level, but we just get a little bit more in depth. So describing, analyzing, interpreting, evaluating art, it's the same in middle school, it's also the same in high school, and it gets up to studio art. So here are just a few examples. Again, this one here on the right with the checkerboard, that would be into the pop art style, that one is in the style of Annie Warhol. Collaborative murals, I just wanted to bring that up because there's some things that happen behind the scenes that you might not be aware of. A student took it upon herself to do a mural out in the library. Also last year, Giselle, she took ownership over Henry Rousseau's style of jungle mural, and those things are really important to me, especially in doing a letter of recommendation for a college. Those are like community service, and if you take a leadership role, she had other artists under her working with her on a four-by-four sheets of, you know, plywood, and then our maintenance department is amazing, they had it up. And like, you know, I just said, "Hey, can you put this over the old bulletin board?" They had it up and framed like in a day. So I want to also say thank you to our maintenance department because we can't do what we do without them being so awesome and supportive as well. These small two-foot by two-foot murals, the students love them, and every year if they choose to have it up along the hallway, middle school, East Hill, to the middle school area, we put them up. Someone would be more than willing to live in that home. Okay, so please could you talk a little bit about studio art, which is a foundation? Everyone has to take studio art before they intake an elective, and we get a lot of students in there who propose the fine artist's graduation requirement. So we explore different mediums, different processes. I also try and include lots of, which they're not thrilled with, writing, and rubrics, so they have to self-evaluate. So we do a lot of writing in criticism and working in groups and critiquing each other's work, working in groups, they seem to love it better after working with friends, so that's how we get around that. So our electives, we offer our drawing and painting one and two, which Michelle teaches graphic design, visual photography, which are each, happy year which Michelle teaches, I teach sculpture and men, ceramics one and two, which sometimes we offer two and sometimes we don't, it just depends. We're proposing two new high school art collectives to fulfill the need, I have students that need to work out of portfolios for the college level. We have such talent the last couple of years, and so what I've been doing is, they'd be coming in during, you know, lunchtime or their study halls or whatever, and it's, we have so many students that have already far surpassed the basic expectations, being one and two, they're beyond that, and they're getting ready for either working professionally or applying to colleges. So one of the classes, it would be called Open Studio Portfolio Prep, it would be for those students that really want to take their artwork to the next level, they have to be self-directed. Typically, that would be an 11th grader or 12th grader. We have a temporary right now that's way beyond that ready, and already has been working professionally. So it would be, you know, coming up with maybe their webpage, design their business plan, if they're applying to colleges, getting their portfolios prepped. But then it could also be open to other students who just want to work on the, I think, so that would be the one that I wanted to propose. Then I have a lot of students saying, "I've taken that idea already, what can we take?" I said, "Well, what are you interested in?" So I've talked to a bunch of students, and they would like to take jewelry making, so proposing jewelry making, beads, ceramics, we could do rocks, paper mache, other things and learn about their history and significance, so they're all excited about that. Yeah, so you can have a look. So this is the second year I've had art club, so it's for students who... So this is the second year I've had art club, so it's for students who, it's after school on Wednesdays, when it isn't a holiday on Monday because buses don't run late, I definitely don't have the bus. But it does, my attendance hasn't been great this year. I kind of battle the books for attendance. So a lot of the same students like that. It's also for students who want to catch up. I tell kids, if you can't, if you don't have a study hall and you'll be behind, come to art club on Wednesday. You can just work on your stuff and catch up. And also operate back to anybody in Michelle's classes, you know, they need, you know, to stay after school to catch up and they don't have to study all. Because I always operate with students who come in during their study hall and they can find a little space more. We've done a lot of contests in class. I've done the popsicle, the Google environmental, I tried, the kids are very excited about those. The popsicle one was all crazy. They teamed up in groups and made these monstrosities of huge industry flow and they love it. They work together in groups, we've been doing a lot of working together in groups. Next year, we did art professional presentations this year. But next year, I'm teaming up with Mrs. Jones. So I already talked to her, we're gonna do some, where they can find it on the website, on the website and how to give a presentation that are exciting and all that. And because that was an issue this year. Digital portfolio that they get at the end of the year, they're making, so then they can get in their writing component too with that and have something digitally they can show and keep and maybe use for their portfolio if they get into college or want to do that. And then that's a picture of the first day, we always do a group collaborative project in each class to kind of let the kids get to know each other and learn and work within the first. Okay, in high school, as with any age, the kids love to get out of school and actually meet with professionals. So actually yesterday, I took a group of students on the bus to Sticker Mule, which is a company I used to work for, the father of the owner, back when I worked as a graphic designer. So they're generous enough to let us come in and tour the company. They gave them all kinds of free merchandise and stickers. But what they loved the most is they let them sit in the big cushy chairs in the conference room and gave them bagels and they, they really treated them like royalty. And this was at FMCC later on in the afternoon, Joel Chapin, a wonderful instructor at FMCC, newly retired, came in special just for my students. And he really talked to them about being an artist and what that's like. Here's Sticker Mule. So we were in the large conference room yesterday and they zoomed in the animator that does the commercials. They have a four-person team. One of the team is one of our, Johnny from here from Kandian Harry, works for them as part of the four-person team, those are the photographer, videographer, they use drones, and then they subcontract out like this animation. So they zoomed in the animator who actually showed our students like what he does and how he does it, which is really cool. And they took us on this big industrial elevator to get to the third floor and it's all these glass encased robots that do, do some of the stickers. So it isn't all manpower, it's a lot. All of the artwork is done digitally, there are no artists in-house, and so they talked about that and showed that as well. That was Sticker Mule. Hopefully go get to go to online, it's in Gat, and it's an outdoor sculpture park. Wanted to take my sculpture class there this year. Talking with them, it seems like they haven't, getting a hold of those art, but we plan sometime midday to take them when no one's doing AP exams. So it doesn't cost anybody and we can walk around, have lunch. And I've been there many times, so I'm gonna lay out, so I'm hoping to do that. We did have a graphic design award winner, Martin Kreitzer. Started off the year very quiet, kind of not very confident with himself, and him winning his prize really, you know, made his chest pop out a little bit. So it was once every county cares coalition got ahold of me via email and asked if we wanted to participate, and of course we did, and Martin was the first place winner. So they gave all the students the t-shirts with the printing on them and gave him a cookie with it on there. We also, Kim and I are high school students. We participate in the GSWC art competition, we've been doing it every year, but we have never had so many people placed. So we had only 13 people placed, either first place, second place, third place. Yeah, okay, so I don't want to mention, so pretty much that's really good. Our first place award winners, we're gonna find out next week, they went on to state which is Colleen Lehtier, a 10th grader, April Booch, grade 11, and Amatai, who's also in just grade 10. So that's why I think it's really important to go on to that next level as far as open studio portfolio, working on their artwork, these are very, you know, very self-directed. And I always make sure I enter a couple studio art students because they're so excited when they're ninth grader and it wins them. So here's the artworks from the first place winners. Amatai really got into working on round draft paper, which just highlights the darks. Colleen tried to reproduce this Van Gogh in April, amazing, the ceramics. Ken teaches all the ceramics, which is taking it to the next level. And I think that's it, that's all we have. If you guys have any questions, please.
Any questions? Real small, I wanted to invite you because I know you're doing amazing things and I see the things in the building and never get to really connect with you and I just wanted to say, I'm sure I speak for everyone, that the artwork's beautiful, it's amazing, and I can tell the projects, you know, I used to steal projects from other districts when my kids were playing volleyball or wherever, you're in a school and I take, you know, you see things hanging up. And so when I see your things, I'm like stealing ideas and, and it's just as nice that you're doing different things and it sounds like you've got lots of trips and things out of the building plan, I just think it's wonderful. So on behalf of everyone, thank you for coming and you're doing an amazing job. I do have one question. I know you mentioned going to Arkel, I forget the capacity, but going down there and we, and this, the answer may be that we can't do it anymore, but in the, back in the day, we used to have an art show down at Arkel, we took advantage of that. And we tied it in with the music department and the facility is just so amazing there. And that's something that we have available that most communities certainly would not be able to take advantage of. And we did that for quite a number of years, as Michelle would say, remember. And it was a lot of work and everything, but I always look forward to doing that. I know the kids felt it was an amazing experience to have their work there in that structure. And I see all the stuff we have out here, which is amazing, but I think sometimes we miss that component of being at a facility like that. And it's something that most districts certainly couldn't offer. So is that something we could consider to do again in the future or was that something that just, you know, ran out of steam or we weren't allowed to do that anymore? To have the Arkel show down there once a year?
Well, we started to, with the Arkel, we were limited to only 20 pieces.
Right.
So to make it more engaging for, it was 20 pieces.
20 pieces per.
22 dimensional pieces.
Really?
Yes.
Because I think we used to have 20 per, you know, I had 20, you had 20, Kevin, you all had 20.
But still 20 pieces.
I know.
So when I have my entire middle school and I can only have 20 pieces. And then what would happen is we could combine it with music, we try to have some live music playing while the art show was going on before the performance. So the only people that we really got were the ones that were gonna be coming anyways, it was a more formal situation. Everybody was sitting in chairs. So that's why, you know, we talked about it, we thought, well, what could we do, like almost like a Van Gogh, like a French cafe, more casual, combine it to get more families out? And that's why the ice cream and the music and everything all combined, you know, we had hundreds of people here. But we, what we could do is we could take some special pieces.
Right, select.
And have them be, you know, on display. And maybe, maybe even something like your leaders or whatever, like when that's all done, put them on display down at Arkel.
Because I know I struggled with that, it was very difficult to select and of course I would kind of budget it.
20 pieces.
It can't be a million, I would say, you know, you know, we made a big fuss for all of that, but it was always a struggle to get to a number that we could use and, you know, some kids weren't being represented, many weren't, but I do think there is value in that facility, even if it's a select show, just highlight, you know, it's another level. It's something in addition to what you already do. And if it's not feasible, I understand that too.
Another idea would be we could have our students present a project, like actually teach a project down there as one of their, you know, things that they do down here. A community service component for graduation.
I have a question as well. You know, I've really been impressed with the quality and the originality of the artwork that is on display. And the thing that I was wondering is what do you think it is that you are doing with the students that, you know, helps that to, to explode and come out of their creative efforts?
I know when I was in elementary school, step up. When I was in elementary school, we didn't really talk about the elements of art and how we use those. And at all, we start at elementary, starting in kindergarten, speaking on all seven elements and how we use them and how we actually look at art and observe art. And I think that that helps a lot with students' creativity. I think it just sparks ideas on how to approach art work towards, it was just kind of like letting ideas out of thin air.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now after the misrepresentation, take it away, Alex.
So the musical Mama Mia was performed by students at Kandian Harry before playing on March 24th, 25th, 26th. I was able to attend an opening night and the dedication of cast members, directors, stage crew, and all the others involved was very obvious. What I find to be the most special part about the place you put on in our school is the encouragement for students just to get involved. Students from all grade levels are promised a role to play as long as they go through the audition process, which is very simple, of course. This year, we had our senior, Tiara Morris, star in the play as Donna, who, for those who didn't know, what we is, the hotel manager and mother of Black Bride. She was the only senior from Kandian Harry in the play and she has been a member of Drama Club for five years. On closing night, the cast members, they share very heartfelt speeches with her and the audience can tell just how tight and definite your performance, performance will become during the production. In the following weeks and in the next month, AP exams and AP practice exams will be held. Both the practice exams and the actual AP tests will be held in the math lab, which is at the end of the history ring. This area is passed through the least during the period, between periods, and during the tests, it's cut off some students all day to reduce distractions from the test speakers, which Mr. Patino does a really good job of reducing distractions, the bells will be turned off. The weeks leading up to the APs can be very stressful for students, but non-AP teachers, they're very accommodating with the workload that they give us. And even the AP teachers, they're, they're very encouraging towards their students. Currently, the AP classes that we offer here are AP Biology, AP Calculus, AP English Literature, Language and Composition, French Language and Culture, United States History, and World History. So on Tuesday, before break, students heard from Richard Jensen in the auditorium, he's a motivational speaker. He told the story of his battle with his addiction to drugs, his trips in and out of jail and his journey to getting clean. Jensen's life was thrown off under being introduced to drugs on a fishing boat in Alaska. From there, he struggled with addiction for 20 years. And following the death of his mother, he realized how out of control his life had become and he made it his goal to go back to college and become a student athlete, which was his initial intention after graduating high school. He told the story of how being a 40-year-old man, trusting college students, he faced many disadvantages, but it was the process of becoming better that kept him away from his previous life, really made himself thereafter. His story I found was impactful in many ways. He was very transparent with the audience and he was able to share a lot of embarrassing moments in his life with us, which made him a very relatable person. He really emphasized how he lost 20 years of his life to drugs, which put the real cost of drugs into perspective. And at the end of the presentation, he answered a few questions for the students. And then he finally reminded us, he left it on a really great note, that his battle of drugs didn't start with hard drugs, but with alcohol and smoking as a teacher, as a teenager. I, I found this to be one of the most important parts of the speech because it spoke directly to the students in our school that were in the audience that do some of the same and think very little of it because it's a momentary act and not a catalyst for other substances of use. So to come in the near future, our communications class will release an anti-bullying video.
Can I just ask a question before you get onto that?
Of course.
I was wondering, you know, talking to students after his presentation, what was the feeling that you got from them? How, what did they take home from it? Did they, were they really impacted by it or what?
I think it's difficult with speech, speakers who are brought to the school because I find that a lot of people are critical of just whoever you bring in. So I heard some of that, but I, a couple of other people, or the majority of people who I overheard having conversations or who I talked to about it, they really liked him. They thought that he did a really great job of talking about his life and really not like glamorizing his life on drugs. He showed us a video where he was being interviewed, when he was going through the, when he was becoming a wrestler and going to the nationals or states or just, just going above college level, where he talked about his journey and his mindset. He talked a lot about mindset, which was really good. And it, it wasn't even just motivational because he got out of a really dark place in his life, but I think they found it motivational because he was a really genuine person and he showed what it means to be a good person, what it means, what you need to do to become a good person. So I think, I think the people really appreciated the presentation and had respect for him.
Thank you.
So yeah, so the anti-bullying video, the students who are participating in it, they want to convey the message of love, not hate. So to do this, they have a series of video clips where they have multiple students and a teacher who are discussing the effects of bullying, types of bullying, and how to be on the street receiving anti-bullying. They want to emphasize how to appropriately react to it and what specific resources we have available in our school. The creators, they feel that they don't expect this at all to eliminate all future cases of bullying because that's a very hard task to take on. But what they want to do is to cause reflection in the student body, so they think twice about commenting about someone's personal choices and identity in a negative way. They want to help people realize that it's far easier to say just, to say just nothing, just say nothing and to be kind to others. The video will be released to all teachers to share with their students during class periods, however, we'll get to see it at the same time. It'll be in class setting, the teachers will wander it, so yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks very much, I appreciate the questions. The next on the agenda is the budget.
So we've gone over most of this over the last couple of weeks. Not much has really changed, probably anything's changed since the last time we met. We were just waiting for some final numbers. And we talked last time about how insurance numbers came in, very, very good actually overall. I was at a superintendent meeting today and GA, excuse me, the BOCS is just talking at 20%. There's a couple of districts at 15 and 17%. So I was very happy to hear where we ended up coming in again, which is great. By the way, HF and BOCS is the same insurance we do and the same Exelis and the same deductible and they're coming in at 18 and 20%. I'm gonna give that down to 12 or 14.
What's that percentage?
4.2 for that, 7.7, so five overall. So really, really good. What we're doing is working because the claims against the, the claims against the.
Doesn't take what they give us. It's like, no.
It's like, no, this is not happening. You're gonna do better.
Oh, yeah.
That's how we negotiate. That's how you do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We keep coming back at it.
That's amazing.
You gotta just kind of keep showing them the things that we're doing and the things that we're saving, and then, you know, E and B has done a great job of totaling how many premiums, how much premiums we paid, and how many claims we've won. And then we couple that with, you know, the HRA is working because people are getting 50% back, and all of a sudden, they're getting $1,000, another $1,200, another $500 in their account, and that's stopping people from going through that first $5,000, for example, which doesn't get the claims, and it doesn't get the claims, so it's a win-win across the board for the future with that. So, hopefully, we can hold on year by year and see how it goes. I think we've kind of weathered the COVID storm. What I mean by that is everyone's back now, and this was the big year where they expected huge increases because of the influx of everybody going back to the doctors. So, we'll see. It's a year by year thing. I still say it's cell phones and cable companies, as I say. Looks like every three or four years, you have to look for a new cell phone company, have to look for a new cable company. Hopefully, that isn't the case because it is a pain to keep going through that, especially if everybody gets used to it and keep going forward. And our over 65, our Umana, has been great, too. We've heard nothing but great things there, and, and with the prescription plan that we bought into as well, I think it evened out the field as we had the same insurance before. So, it's worked out good. So, we'll go through the budget here, so if you want to go through our overview for the most part of the year. We have goals for the budget each year, and, you know, they're, they're basic. Let's maintain and enhance programs for students. That's number one, right? That's number one there. Keep the tax levy, you know, I can never understand districts sometimes when they have to start cutting, and they start cutting the golf team or the art club, you know, that's the type of stuff we want to keep for our students, you know what I mean? And I know personnel is not the best thing to lose, but let's try to hold students and their programs solid as much as we can. And we've done a great job again, I think, this, with this budget. We keep the tax levy under the allowable tax cap because, hey, everyone's going through some tough times right now again, and, and I think we've done that again. Maintain jobs because it's important for our community. Ensure the district will be financially solvent in the future because this is a very hard business to, how do I say this? We don't have the luxury of raising prices for our products. We don't have the luxury of going out and saying, okay, our hamburger prices go up 25 cents, or raise the revenue. We don't have that luxury. We also don't have the luxury of going over the tax cap. We can give it a shot, but we know what that would do to the community as well, and we can get a chance, you know, of not passing the budget. So, we have a lot of constraints under us to make sure that we get, we get it right. So, and we want to make sure that, you know, the district's financially solvent in the future. If you compound health insurance, if you compound salaries, if you compound special education costs, that stuff doesn't stop, it continues to drive up and drive up, and those totals don't add up as you keep compounding your amounts. So, we just hope year by year to kind of stay ahead of the curve, and then balance the budget. You know, the whole idea is always try to balance your budget, which is very hard to do, very, very hard to do. So, here's our programs and opportunities for our students. We added a .5 BNL teacher. We maintained a full-time guidance position at the counselor at East Hill from our federal funds, and that has done wonders, doubling our counseling, adding home run programs and turnabout programs and student mentoring. Our PPS staff just does a phenomenal job of getting to root causes before they turn into major problems. And if we, if you look at the things that are going on in our country, you always hear the same thing, right? Let's find root causes and let's get to it before it gets bad. And I think we do a great job of doing that here and giving the kids the emotional support that they need to get through a very tough time, a very, very tough time, especially after COVID, and all the information that's coming at them constantly. So, adding that counselor has been a huge help.
Who's the counselor now?
It's Smythe.
Karen Smythe.
Karen Smythe was a former graduate, and so she works for the, I can't remember if it's the, the family council.
That's what I was gonna add, add up as well.
So, and she's returning next year again, correct?
Yep.
So, we hook them, we get them and we hook them, keep them ahead. .5 music, we're adding some electives at that middle school. We allowed to get some music and technology at the same time, which is great, and elective, and we get to keep a, a very valued member of our staff that students like and, and parents and students know, which is a home run for us all the way across. We've sustained three IAS teachers that we had through the COVID funds to still help our students, make sure that they get over the learning loss and give them the supports that they need. We're adding a special education teacher for math and science, where we had English and social studies. We now have a math and science as well in there. We have a teacher residency program that we've been talking about for months since last year from the summit, and new courses, the art, just talked about a few of them, and why the food service manager will be coming, coming out of the school lunch fund for the most part, and through Capital Region BOSI's, which is Adeble, that's just another addition. Actually, you know, Lori's here, you know, I know there's not a lot of people here, and I'll say stuff later, but, I mean, we've talked plenty of times. You've just been a huge asset to our district from everything, from the input, from administrative meetings, to what you do here, splitting yourself between two districts, and also what you've done with the Drama Club. So, I know we'll have more time to talk about this, but just really outstanding job, and we, we hate to lose you, but we understand why, without a doubt, and she's put in to run for the Board of Education, so maybe she won't go too far. So, we'll, we'll see from there. But thank you so much, and I know how hard those jobs are, without a doubt. And so, we have the Capital Region BOSI's coming next week, and Lori and I will sit down and talk with him and work through issues or concerns or problems or anything. Our proposed tax increase is 1.638, which has only been a 1.52% average in the last three years. So, we've been very cognizant of our community and the tough times with COVID and, and the inflation, and I think that shows big time. Current proposed budget maintains and increases job opportunities. It uses established reserve funds to offset annual purchases. You know, we have our reserve funds that we built, like an equipment reserve, so we don't have to put that in our general fund budget anymore. And we continue with the current ARPA and ESER plan for COVID-19 with our I Ready and our High School Guidance Council, so there's still funds there available for one more year. The next page, let's flip that over, is just a copy of the teacher residency program that we will send out to a flyer, actually, tonight, if we pass the budget tonight, we'll send it out to the faculty so they can start to look at this. There'll be an informational meeting next Wednesday that I'll hold for anybody who's interested, and you just have to hit that QR code and you can apply, and I'll answer any questions next week at the informational meeting. So, kind of excited about this. I've met with the Chamber of Commerce twice now in terms of setting up the internships. They're really excited about it. They're a little more excited than I am, I think she is, because she's like, wow, this is great, nobody else is doing this. I think this will be great to kind of kick this off, and I think the rest of the school districts will like it, too, so we're gonna use this as a model. But that's gonna help us, as I've said plenty of times, to get us set up for our academies to build internships for our students. So, it's kind of a win-win across the board there. Next is the overview. For the most part, we have a foundation aid increase, which has been bigger than normal. As we said, our wealth index changed, so it increased our foundation aid. Caution to that, that's not gonna be 12.7% in the future. We can only hope that it holds at least to where we are, and we get our minimum increase in the future. The, the foundation aid change formula, foundation aid formula will change next year because they fully funded foundation aid now. I don't know where it's going, but I read an article in the Controller saying, get ready, the cliff's coming. They already put an article in the, in the NISBA, I think it was in NISBA?
Newsletter.
Newsletter, saying that the cliff is coming. I know they always say that, but I don't know how much more they can kind of keep giving, type of a thing. So, we have our solar projects, as we've talked about, and just using this as miscellaneous stuff, where we've turned our pilot programs into educational contributions, so our tax cap doesn't get affected. Solar pilot programs are great because you're getting money every year, but it kills your tax cap. And over 15 years, when the money's coming in, it's great. Day after 15 years, you've taken now a 15-year hit in your tax cap, which can never be replaced. So, the educational contributions will help us offset costs and funds in the future for that. Obviously, we have retirements, which helps offset some breakage. Planning for the future, we have our ERS reserve, our TRS reserve, our equipment reserve, our capital building project, capital bus reserve, and fund balance. We maintain other areas of the budget with minimal increases, like we've talked about health insurance, annual increases for contractual obligations and benefits and special education costs, which happen. And we have added things in our budget, which is a capital bus reserve, which we have every year, actually. Our equipment reserve, which we're looking at a lawnmower, the technology lab for the middle school tech and music, and additional classroom furniture. I'm really excited that a bunch of people put in for the classroom furniture, they applied, and there was, I want to say 28 more classes, and they had to apply, so they had to put the reasons why, what they're gonna use it for, how they're gonna change their instruction and their classes, so it was exciting to see that, too. And then, we have to establish a new capital building reserve. Remember what reserves are? You establish something for $2 million. Once you put $2 million in it, the reserve is done. It's not like you can keep it up to $2 million. Once you put $2 million in, you have to now establish a new one. So, over the course of time, which, how long has this one, do you think, Lee, been?
10 years was the old one, and then it was already fully funded, so this is gonna be a new one that we can fund.
So, you-
It lasts for 10 years, but it's not gonna, it's gonna be fully funded by then, hopefully.
So, you understand, once you put $2 million in, you can't like put 1.8 million, take 1.6 out and put 1.2 back in, you can only go up to $2 million. So, it's reached, so it's not like we're creating a new one, we're just re-establishing the current one. And then to close, on the next page there, is, when I say close, we have some sheets on the bottom. We'll give added support in key areas for our students, enhance programs for our students, we'll keep the district physically solvent, we'll keep the tax burden to a minimum, and we have our budget meetings, which is May 3rd, faculty and staff. I'll do a Google Meet with them. May 4th, I'll do a community budget hearing, which we'll all do here. Then, May 10th, I'll do another WebEx one, just to make sure if anybody couldn't make it. And the next page is all of our expenses, which you can see, this is what we've been showing the last couple of meetings, nothing's really changed too much. So, that's your overall increase.
Let me just add, the one thing that's not there is the actual budget photos on the 16th, May 16th, just to let everyone know.
Our red, our budget newsletter will be out by like May 3rd. We've already kind of got most of that done, ready to go, and we'll kick off Parent Squares and email this to people. Revenues, you can see the revenues on the next page, which is our biggest increase, has been the foundation aid, as you can see. And you'll see down there that we're using $75,000 in ERS. That's a placeholder to balance it. There's a good chance we probably won't use $75,000, but remember, we also didn't. We took debt service and we shipped to some of it for the tax increase, so the revenue will come back over the next couple of years. So, even if you use that $75,000, we're getting it back because we shifted the debt service. So, it's really a balanced budget again, for the most part. Lee, you got anything else to add?
No, you did a great job.
Any questions? It's pretty much similar to what we've gone over, nothing's really changed. Again, we were just waiting for the last couple of numbers. So, that's that.
Okay, so, there's no questions, we move on to approvals. I think on, was it the March 22nd meeting that you missed?
March 23rd, yeah.
March 23rd, okay. So, we'll just do that one separately, and then I'll ask for consent agenda for the rest of the approvals, okay? So, any questions or comments on the minutes of 23rd? Motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Any abstentions?
Abstain. Abstain.
Sorry. Okay. Then, I'd like to add, any kind of motion for consent agenda for the rest of the approvals?
Motion for a consent agenda.
Second? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, any questions on the minutes for March 9? I just have one thing, is that I didn't meet with Neil Greslau, I met with Robert Smalls.
Okay.
So, just, just, just to be-
We don't want Neil to be upset.
Okay, any, any questions on that? Okay, bills, anything there? All right, as usual, I have a couple. 63, 226, Amazon Credit Services, what is that?
That's just Amazon.
Just buy things from Amazon?
Yeah, yeah.
I was wondering if-
They just changed, it, it, they did change the company and where we send the payment, so it used to be Am, it was called something else on here, so Amazon Credit Services, Amazon Credit Services is the new vendor, but it's still Amazon.
Okay. And then, 63, 280, bound to stairs, bound to state, bound books. What is that?
It's just a, like, that's what the elementary library uses for books.
So, we just buy books?
Yeah.
Interesting name. Okay, anything else of bills? Any questions on treasurer's report? Moving right along, budget transfers, actually, the briefest budget transfers I ever saw. Any question there? Okay, property tax report card? Anything? Okay, without the 23, 24 budget? Any comments, questions there? SRO contract? Looks like it's the same as we've had, right? There's no changes?
Why does it say 42? Is that just for the school year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it says July 1st, June 3rd, so I was wondering.
Yeah, anyway, it's 42, yeah. Yeah. Sometimes we'll get them some summer months, Sundays, stuff like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Family Counseling Center, anything new there, Jen?
Nope, the same.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Transportation requests, anything there? Approve the new courses? Anything there? Okay, and then, anybody have any surplus questions?
Go on, the, the option.
Okay, so, seeing no questions, I will ask for motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to old business, budget hearing on May 4th at 6:30, that would be before our meeting, where we're gonna have a May meeting the first Thursday of the month because of requirements in terms of the budget approval process.
Yeah.
Are we still having a policy meeting hitting at 5:30?
I was gonna ask you, can we move that to the next Board of Education meeting?
Finally.
I'm just waiting for total conduct stuff to come back from our lawyers, and I don't know if it's gonna be ready for May 4th.
That's fine, I just have it down, so.
The 20, the 25th, can we do that before? Right?
Uh...
Or, that's our May meeting, yeah.
Right.
Our second meeting, excuse me. Is that good?
Hopefully, I can be there, yeah, Jen is, procedure, okay, so that's a point.
Yeah, although it's 6 o'clock that night.
So, that's why I think it should be 4.
Okay, and then, just a reminder that the BOSI's election will be on April 26th, and that'll be at 7:30, and we'll be doing it by WebEx or whatever, right?
Yes.
And I have one thing, you can come in, but you don't wanna- Okay, I have a, I don't see new business on here, but I'll add it on the agenda. And the new business is that NISBA is going to be having a webinar on, on April 26th from 8:30 until noon on the significance of some new judicial decisions around religion and education. I'm, I'm gonna sign up for that, but I was wondering if anyone else would like to join me in, in participating in that.
What is it?
The Psalm of 26 at 8:30. So, we'll be after the BOSI's thing. I was thinking, if anyone wanted to join me, I could come with the school, and we could be here and watch it together, if not, we'll go home.
Will you be sending a code for that?
What?
For the WebEx? I mean, are we gonna access that? I mean, is there a code?
Which one, the NISBA or the meeting?
The meeting.
Yeah, we'll send something.
We'll send, I'll send the WebEx.
In the NISBA, you can do, can they do it all on, from the house?
I, I'm not sure what, we'll have to check on that. But if, if there's anyone else interested in that, or?
I'm interested in what they have to say.
I know you're working.
I know, but I'm interested in what they have to say.
Yeah, I'll certainly report on it.
Okay. Should you do it here, Mark?
What?
Would you?
I, I would be willing to come in.
Come in if you'd like.
Okay, so why don't we leave in the conference room? Would that be good?
Very nice.
Okay, so let's do that.
So, we'll come in for 7:30 and just stay with the home, yeah.
Yeah. Go on, get some coffee.
7:15 or whatever, yeah. I'll come in.
Okay, great. Okay, so, seeing this, that's the end of our regular agenda, and we do have some stuff for executive session, so I'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Motion.